Good evening, everyone. We're going to ask for a motion to reconvene our caucus meeting.
Oh, wait.
All right. What I did.
I'll make the motion.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number two, proclamation for Girl Scout Gold Award, Cassandra Shank. Please come on. I'd like to read the proclamation, if I may. Now, if you'll come down and maybe we'll take some pictures with your parents. Thank you. Officer of the Mayor, proclamation. Whereas Juliet Gordon-Daisy Low organized the first Girl Scout troop over 100 years ago on March 12th, 1912, in Savannah, Georgia; and whereas today, the Girl Scouts are over 2.7 million strong, with over 1.9 million girls and 800,000 volunteers; and whereas a Girl Scout's mission is to build one's character, courage, and confidence, and make the world a better place; and whereas the Gold Award is the highest achievement within Girl Scouts of the USA, earned by senior and ambassador Girl Scouts, and only 5.4 percent of eligible Girl Scouts successfully earn the Gold Award; and whereas, on average, Gold Award recipients spend more than two years on their projects with 80-hour minimum requirements; and whereas, in order for Cassandra Shank to receive this rank, she created a website for the Lacy Township Historical Society, as well as a Facebook account, to better promote the mission of the Historical Society; and whereas, the Mayor and the Township Committee wish to commend and congratulate Cassandra Shank on receiving this high honor; and whereas, the Mayor and the Township Committee would like this accomplishment and the dedication of this young individual to be an example for all those involved in scouting, and thank her for her project well done. Now therefore, I, Peter Curatolo, Mayor, Lacy Township, on behalf of myself and the Township Committee, honor Cassandra Shank for her outstanding accomplishment, and encourage other scouts to follow her example. Would you like to say a couple of words about some of the projects you've been working on, or something about the Historical Society?
Well, I first started this going through my Gold Award, not really knowing what to do, and I just have such a proud sense of being a part of Lacy Township, so I worked with an advisor, Ms. Elmore, and she and I came together and really made the website and the Facebook that I made possible, with gathering information about the town, the township's history, and the upcoming events, just to try to get more people out in town.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you. I have a daughter who's in Scouts, certainly didn't achieve the rank that you have. As people have often heard me say, I'm all about girl power. I'm very, very proud of you and Ms. Foreman. You are our town's first Gold Award winners that we recognize here tonight through proclamation. I have a tremendous amount of respect, as Ms. Hitten knows, for her and the Historical Society, and especially her as a person. I look at her and at society as really the holders of the history of our town. And so again, heartfelt thanks. I'd like to take a couple of pictures with you, if you're okay with that, and I'd certainly like to hear then from my colleagues on the committee. Great.
Would you like to take some pictures?
Yeah, you can.
Get the, um, if we get them.
Chief.
Get the microphone out of the way.
Yeah.
Move that back, so you guys can almost stay in the middle of it.
Jump right in there.
Yes.
The parents should, yeah, definitely step up here, too. I'm sure they were helpful in this.
Do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, I do. First, I want to congratulate you, and you mentioned the name out there, the Historical Society. They're fabulous people in the town, they do great things. Thank you for everything you've done for them. And to your parents, you should be proud. It's a very good, it's a big honor, and it's an honor to us, all the committee up here, to have things like this happen, and thank you again. Thank you to your parents, Mr. and Ms. Shank, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Committee McQuinn.
Cassandra, congratulations. I know, I know it takes a lot of work to accomplish the things that you've accomplished. I had a daughter that was in Girl Scouts, and she never accomplished halfway near the amount of stuff you're doing, but, you know, it is a team effort. It's your mom, your dad, your whole family, and you can see tonight, you have so many people here supporting you that, you know, have certainly been part of that travel as you've gone through it. I think you've done a wonderful job. Working with this, and the Historical Society members is a great thing, because that's something that we hold near and dear to our heart here in Lacy Township, and we're so fortunate to still have a lot of history in this town that, you know, more people are learning about. You're putting an avenue out there now, where a lot more people your age will access it. People like our age up here probably don't know how to access it, but, you know, we truly thank you for it.
Don't we call them.
Yeah. Veronica is the exception to most.
So is Lauren, and, yeah, and Steven, yeah.
But it's something that, you know, we're very, very thankful for, very proud of, and you should be very proud of yourself for what you've done, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Committee McQuinn. Committee McKennis.
Yes, Cassandra, congratulations to you and your hard work. I think it's a great idea to pick the Historical Society, because I think there's not too many people in town that actually take the time to visit both the Schoolhouse Museum or the Potter Church anymore. They're both very, very interesting buildings, filled with a lot of good stuff, so, congratulations.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
You can sit down now and get out of the line.
Item number three, proclamation for Girl Scout Gold Award.
Ms. Foreman.
Ms. Foreman.
Good to see you.
You, too. It's great to see you, and I'd be happy to read this proclamation, and we'll do the same as we did for Ms. Shank. Officer of the Mayor, proclamation. Whereas Juliet Gordon-Daisy Low organized the first Girl Scout troop over 100 years ago on March 12th, 1912, in Savannah, Georgia; and whereas today, Girl Scouts are now over 2.7 million strong, with over 1.9 million girls and 800,000 volunteers; and whereas, a Girl Scout's mission is to build one's character, courage, and confidence, and make the world a better place; and whereas, the Gold Award is the highest achievement within Girl Scouts of the USA, earned by a senior and ambassador Girl Scout, and only 5.4 percent of eligible Girl Scouts successfully earn the Gold Award; and whereas, on average, Gold Award recipients spend more than two years on their projects with an 80-hour minimum requirement; and whereas, in order for Erin Foreman to receive this rank, she started the Lacy Lockbox Program, a free program for Lacy residents that allowed the Lacy Police Department access to a home during an emergency, or for a wellness visit; and whereas, the Mayor and the Township Committee wish to commend and congratulate Erin Foreman on receiving this high honor; and whereas, the Mayor and the Township Committee would like this accomplishment and the dedication of this young individual to be an example for all those involved in scouting, and we thank her for her project well done. Now therefore, I, Peter Curatolo, Mayor, Lacy Township, on behalf of myself and the entire Township Committee, honor Erin Foreman for her outstanding accomplishments, and encourage other scouts to follow her example. Congratulations. Well, Erin, you've been an example to so many students throughout, not only throughout Lacy, but what you've done with this Dropbox program, as I'm in constant contact with our chief. Lacy was one of the first towns to get the prescription drop-off box, and now you, at your young age, have helped seniors in our community with your Lockbox program. An outstanding program, to be sure. Police no longer have to knock a door down, they can do a well visit, we can check on seniors, if seniors are on a list, or an infirm list during a hurricane or a storm event. So well thought out, so perfectly executed. You deserve a lot of credit, and I tell you, if the young people in Lacy Township follow your lead, the streets will be paved with gold, because you and everyone like you are such an integral part of what we do. The chief speaks about you in glowing terms, as we all do. So, again, I'd like to ask you permission, come down there, take a picture with you, and then I'd certainly like to hear comments from my colleagues on the dais.
Of course.
Great.
Chief, why don't you jump in the picture?
No, Chief. Yeah. No doubt.
Get him back, yeah. Chief, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, absolutely. So I'll just start out my saying that last week I had the opportunity to actually go see Erin, who received our Gold Award in Lakewood at the event. You know, and I got to say, I wasn't really, prior to that, I wasn't really enthused with everything that the Girl Scouts did. And I got to say that I learned that night, when I attended this event, that they really do so much, you know, for the communities, and I'm so proud that Erin came to us and chose this program here for Lacy Township. It's just something that we can give back to our community, and I believe the Lockbox Program and Keep It Tuck program that we have, you know, for residents, it's a really great program. You know, I already asked her back, and I actually, it was the first night that I met her, it seems like it was so a moment ago, I think at the end of our F-hour, 45-minute meeting, I think I asked her if she wanted a job here, if I remember correctly. I tried to get her on to our school post and all these other things, but she's a very busy young lady, so, who knows, we never know in the future what happens, but, good luck to you. You have, by far, seen the most talent that I've ever seen in a young lady, just your age. I wish you the best of luck. I got to thank your parents as well, I'm sure they are very busy, you know, behind the scenes with what they do, and, you know, I congratulate them, and I also congratulate Cassie for also receiving her Gold Award tonight. I think it's great, the first woman in Lacy ever, so I congratulate the woman, and thank you, good luck to her.
If you don't mind, would I be able to present some remarks?
No, sir. Me?
So, Girl Scouts in the Jersey Shore has the Regional Junior Award, which is for members of the community that help out Girl Scouts and Girl Scout individuals with reaching their goals and building their confidence and character. So the first one is to the Township of Lacy.
Great.
And our next one is to the Lacy Township Police Department, both of which for helping me with my Gold Award and being outstanding, helping members of the community with Girl Scouts.
Erin, congratulations. It's definitely an honor to start something like this for our town, is an honor for me, and like I said before, to the other young lady, the rest of this committee, we thank you for everything, and we especially also thank your parents, that's a great thing. You have a wonderful woman here. Chief, Lieutenant, thank you very much for supporting this program and making it where it needs to be with her. We appreciate it very much, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Committee McQuinn.
Erin, I remember, it wasn't that many months ago, when you came to the senior luncheon and actually proposed this project, you know, I guess it was in the last year or thereabouts, and the folks that were there were absolutely blown away, because it was a, something that you were providing to the seniors in this community that could give them that safety feeling, that God forbid there's a situation where they need medical care, they, you know, there's anything where we have to get into a house, now the police department has the ability to do that, and it really, you know, was so welcomed by the, you know, seniors in this community, because a lot of them do live alone, and it's something that, you know, it gives them a lot more, more comfort, living alone in this community. So, you made a major impact with them, you did the same thing when you came before us at the governing body, when the chief first brought you in, Lieutenant Sullivan brought you before us, and we have to thank you, because it really is providing a service for people that mean so much to us, that, you know, we don't know if they're always okay, but with this, if there's ever a problem, we know that we can get to them right away and make sure that they are going to be okay. So, thank you to you, thank you to your family, you know, you're somebody we're very proud of, I can only imagine how proud your family is of your accomplishments at this young age, and we know we're going to see great things in the future as we move forward. Keep scouting, you know, keep in your life, because, you know, you're not only, you know, done a great job yourself, but you're going to be a tremendous mentor to so many young girls moving forward in the future, so, we truly thank you for everything you've done. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Committee McKennis.
Sharon, congratulations both you and your parents, and in addition to this being a great program for safety, since we are the highest, one of the highest taxed states in the country, it's great they developed a free program, so, congratulations.
Item number four, presentation from Exelon.
Good evening. My name is Tim Boer, the new site vice president at Oyster Creek. Some of you may know Gary Stathis, my predecessor, he's gone back to the corporate office after serving four years at Oyster Creek. Just a little bit about myself, since it's the first opportunity I have to meet you. By education, I'm a nuclear engineer from Penn State University, and MBA from Whiterfield University, also in Pennsylvania. I've got 33 years in the industry of nuclear power plant operations, and I'm very pleased and proud to be here in Lacy Township, working at Oyster Creek, with the fine employees working at the power plant. One of the things I'm struck with, as I arrived at the plant, is how prideful the employees are, and there's 500 of them, how prideful they are in terms of running the plant safely and at excellent levels, but also, they're very prideful in supporting the community. And as you know, they are one of the largest supporters of the Ocean County United Way, and also provide many, many hours of community service in the township. So, in that vein, I'd like to, on behalf of the employees of Oyster Creek, and also on behalf of Exelon Corporation, like to present Lacy Township with a check for $10,000 to support the July 3rd fireworks. We've been a proud supporter of that for a number of years, and very proud to continue in sponsoring that event.
Very grateful. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Well, that's the real check.
Would you just say a couple of words, if I could? Tim, for many, many years, before you came, and before I was on this board, certainly more than four years ago, that nuclear plant has been a great corporate neighbor to the people of this township. The donations you had referenced, the United Way, that's just one of many, whether it's, you know, outreach for a park, some needs in our schools, here in the township, thousands and thousands of people that enjoy the fireworks display every year. I want people to know, and I do take every opportunity to try to educate people about the outreach that your organization has, and, you know, what it means to our town. So, I want to offer on behalf of the Township Committee, thanks. I know how much our people really look forward to those July fireworks. Every portion of our town, every part of our town, I mean, the field is filled, you can barely see the grass. You may have seen it, your predecessor has seen it, and we're very grateful for that large gesture we give our town each year. And now I'd like to open it up to our other members of the committee. Deputy Mayor, Giuliano.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the mayor said everything, but I want to personally thank Exelon for being a partner with us for all these years. There's no doubt, you've been a good neighbor, you've supported us in numerous different things, so I just want to thank you, and look forward to years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Committee McQuinn.
Tim, welcome to town. You know, like Deputy Mayor said, we've had a great relationship over, you know, many decades with the power plant here in town, and in fact, the young lady sitting next to you has been a part of that for many, many years, and I heard Sue was possibly retiring this year, which...
Are you hearing that? Not allowed.
This is not allowed, okay. But that's even better.
I guess it's her, too, Sal.
That's as good as...
Her permission denied.
Yeah. That's as good a news as getting that $10,000, believe me, because she's a, she's an anchor here, she's done a tremendous job for the governing body, anytime we reach out to her, and she's our go-to person, and we look forward to working with you in the future. It's been a number of years that Exelon's been doing this, back when things were really bad, in 2010, they started donating the money, because we were actually considering canceling our fireworks at that time, during the hard economic times we were going through, and Exelon stepped up, just like they have in so many cases over the years, so, you know, we're very thankful that you've continued that tradition every year, and the people in the town really enjoy this, so, we look forward to seeing you out there on July 3rd, and, you know, please thank everyone down at the plant. The staff is fabulous down there, there's so many local people down there, they put their heart and soul to that place, so, we look forward to working with you as time goes on, so, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Committee McKennis.
I took over the comments, yeah, welcome to town. I attended many community information nights, I was there the other night, I can't say enough about the staff there at the plant, and also the level of communication that goes on behind the scenes, because we've always had a great relationship with everybody at the plant, so, we'll continue to, thanks.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting.
Thank you.
Great. Item number five, sale of notes and bond results.
As a requirement by law, I am to notify the governing body that we sold the 3.3 million bond anticipation notes for 2%. It went out this week, it was to TD Securities, and the special emergency notes of $144,000 we sold this week for 1.74889%, and that went to the Passaic Valley Water Commission.
Listen through second, yes?
Go ahead.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
I do have an add-on this evening, I'm going to pass some pictures down here. I have a letter from a, well, I would say a resident, right now they are displaced because of Hurricane Sandy. They live on a street, well, they're living out of the area, but they have a house that they raised, it has been lowered back down onto the foundation, they have a storage trailer for the contents of their house in the driveway there, as you can see from the pictures that I provided. The storage trailer was issued on 7/1 of 16 to be there, it was allowed for six months, Glaretta extended it for another six months, so right now it expires on July 31st of 17. They are in dispute with their prior contractor through the REM program, they've had some problems because of the REM program with their current contractor, they are now looking for a change of contractor, which, they're waiting for REM to approve that change of contractor, so they can move forward. There was a foundation inspection on the house, but they don't know when they're going to get the approvals from REM. In order for the new contractor to continue finishing up the house, they would like an extension of the trailer on their property, and their comment was an extension from three to four months, once REM lets them know they can move forward, and they don't know when REM's going to let them move forward. So, I mean, we're looking at a very open-ended condition here. They said that they would hope that we would give them until December 31st of 17.
Motion?
I have a problem with it, you know, the problem is, these things are so open-ended, and, because I've heard from people who live out there, you know, it's a community where it's fairly high-end stuff, and the trailer's from Heck Brothers, Heck Brothers has a service where they can actually store the trailer at their location, and, you know, a year is a lot of time, and we've had situations come before us recently, you know, we do everything we can for Sandy victims, but we can't just ruin the quality of life of people in the neighborhoods at this point in time, you know, this many years later, because, you know, contractors, you know, have problems, whatever issues they're dealing with, it's just too open-ended, so, I mean, I won't make a motion, I'm not in favor of it, but, that's my...
Well, the house was moved, settled right down, but it's a REM, and REM's going to finish the investigation and authorize that the proceed with the contractor.
Should be granted, I hear. Well, they've already been, they were granted an additional six months beyond what our ordinance calls for anyways, so they have until July 31st at this point.
Yeah, yeah, they have until July 31st, and it expires, so...
So they got a year out of it, and our ordinance says three months with a three-month extension.
We got time.
So they got two additional months.
Yeah. And we had one recently that came before us, that wanted a FEMA trailer on a site, and they said it could be three years, well, you know, we just have to be cautious of the quality of life for the other people within the neighborhood, so...
So no extension beyond 7/31?
No.
Okay.
Any other ads?
No, I have nothing else to add on here, yes.
So, motion, move it. Adjournment?
Motion.
Second?
Second to adjourn, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, we'll write it, Township of Lacy, Township Mayor. June 8th, 2017, adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, according to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Esberry Park Press and the Lacy Beacon, and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. We'll have a shot, to the flag, and a moment of silence.
The flag is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, second reading of ordinance 2017-14, authorizing the bonding to 2017 capital projects and equipment.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Ordinance of Township of Lacy...
No. Excuse me? Second reading?
Yes, yes.
Second reading.
In order to Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, providing for various capital improvements and acquisition of various capital equipment, appropriating $1,160,150 there fore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,102,140 of bonds and notes to finance the same of these costs. This is the 2017 capital improvement projects and equipment that was authorized by the adoption of the municipal budget. We are now putting the money in place in order for us to proceed with these projects and equipment. Second reading?
Second reading. We're going to open up the comments to the floor.
Seeing none, motion, close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second on the ordinance?
Second.
Mr. McKennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo.
Yes. Item number two, second reading of ordinance 2017-15, authorizing for lease with the county of Ocean.
In order to Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing lease of a portion of Block 1837, Lot 4.01, to the county of Ocean, in accordance with NJSA 48 Con 12-14. This is a portion of a 100-by-100 lot that the county of Ocean is looking to construct and maintain 180-foot communications tower for the expansion of the communications with the 911 system. It is in the back here, behind our public works, in a wooded portion of Gilly Park.
Any second reading, open the floor to public comment.
Seeing none, motion, close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McKennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item number three, second reading of ordinance 2017-16, amending Chapter 335 zoning.
In order to Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 335 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacy entitled zoning. This is in accordance with our inclusionary overlay district for the affordable housing set aside on multifamily and single-family attached developments along Route 9 or Lacy Road east of the Garden State Parkway. This is part of our co-settlement with regards to that, and this was just an amendment from the one that we had done last year, which was ordinance 2016-17.
Making a second reading, I'll open the floor to public comment.
Seeing none, motion, close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Resolution 2017-164, authorizing an emergency contact, contract with Albert Marine Construction.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in Jersey, authorizing an emergency contract with Albert Marine Construction for removing and repairing the bulkhead on Cedar Drive. We have a portion of the bulkhead on Cedar Drive that unfortunately has blown out, it will have, it has two residential properties on either side of it, plus the curb and the road. This was done last week, Albert Marine Construction came out and corrected the situation, and now we have to put the paperwork in place authorizing the emergency.
Motion, please.
Move it.
Second?
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item five, resolution 2017-165, authorizing the issuance and sale of tax anticipation notes.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in Jersey, authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of tax anticipation notes of the Township of Lacy. This is, we do this annually at this time of the year with regards to tax anticipation notes until we get our money from the energy tax receipts. They used to give it to us in July, now they don't give it to us until September, so we are in the need of borrowing $6 million to get us through this summer period.
Motion, please, move it.
Shiger.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item number six, resolution 2017-166, appointing a public safety telecommunicator trainee.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Mark A. Fucciello as a full-time public safety telecommunicator trainee for the Township of Lacy Police Department.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item number seven, resolution 2017-167, appointing the public display, approving the public display of fireworks.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in Jersey, approving the public display of the Lacy Township fireworks in accordance with the guidelines of the State Division of Fire Safety. And again, our fireworks are on July 3rd with a rain date of July 5th. This has been approved and appropriated in the municipal budget, and also thanks to Exelon, been paid for this evening, and this is all in accordance with the Division of Fire, and of course, our municipal joint insurance fund.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item number eight, resolution 2017-168, authorizing an inter-local services agreement with the Board of Education.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an inter-local services agreement with the Lacy Township Board of Education for the School Resource Officer Program. We are entering into an inter-local service agreement with the Lacy Township Board of Education for them to start a school resource officer program, we will be assigning them one police officer during the period that the school is in session. For this first 10 months, from September 1st through June 30th, the school reimbursed the township $65,000. The following two years will be $85,000 each year.
Motion, please.
Gary made the motion, second.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item number nine, resolution 2017-169, requesting the New Jersey Department of Transportation to perform a traffic study on the timing of the traffic lights.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in Jersey, requesting the New Jersey Department of Transportation to perform a traffic study of the traffic lights on US Highway 9 south of Lacy Road, and authorizing a cost sharing for the same pursuant to the NJ DOT Policy 346.
Wait, all right.
Go ahead.
So, I thought, we're going to quote?
It's going to be about $2,000 of our 25% share that we have to pay for them to do a traffic light study. They no longer do it for...
I'm really talking about this, I say, yeah, I...
They no longer do it for free, and the only way to do the study is to hire them to do it, because it's a US highway.
So I know we need to discuss this, and I know I was the one complaining about it, so...
But you're not the only one that's complaining about it, because I do have residents that complain about it.
So, is everybody else okay with this?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
This was...
Because no matter what day of the week it is, it's...
This was for the traffic on Route 9 South, I was fed up, I had it the other day, so...
Right, and we have the summer tourism season coming, and if it can reduce congestion, motion, let's talk about it.
Yeah, so the town is obligated for a 25% cost sharing of the cost for the employees of the DOT to go out and do that traffic study, and normally, it's just counters that come over and plus the timing of the light, but they no longer pay 100% of the cost.
Motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item 10, resolution 2017-170, renewing retail distribution licenses.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in Jersey, renewing planetary retail distribution licenses in the Township of Lacy. This is for our liquor stores, which is Lacy Liquors, JR's Liquors and Spirits Unlimited.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
And Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item 11, resolution 2017-171, renewing retail consumption licenses.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, renewing planetary retail consumption licenses in the Township of Lacy. Those would be Cafries, Captain's Inn, Applebee's, Latitudes, the pocket license of Route 9 Restaurants, and Il Giordano's.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item 12, resolution 2017-172, renewing club licenses.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, renewing club liquor licenses in the Township of Lacy. That would be the Lick Club's Lodge, the VFW, the Moose Lodge, the Knights of Columbus, or the Forked River Columbian Club, and the Forked River Tuna Club.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item 13, resolution 2017-173, authorizing a chapter 159 for clicker or ticker.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the 2017 municipal budget known as Chapter 159 of the Township of Lacy pursuant to NJSA 48 Con 4-87. This is a grant, it's a reimbursable grant. We have received the funding, so since we did not have it at the time of the budget adoption, we have to place it into the budget. The amount we received was $5,500.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item 14, resolution number 2017-174, authorizing a chapter 159 for clean communities funding.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the 2017 municipal budget known as Chapter 159 of the Township of Lacy pursuant to NJSA 48 Con 4-87. This is for the Clean Communities Grant Program money that we received. It's in the amount of $72,978.19.
Motion?
Steve, motion, second?
Second.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item 15, resolution 2017-175, authorizing a lien for property maintenance.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, accepting certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of the bring cleaning up of the property located at 710 Bousworth Point, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of $113.28.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item 16, resolution 2017-176, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits help for the use of municipal facilities.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
And Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item 17, resolution 2017-177, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $5,564,129.73.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item 18, monthly reports.
Municipal Clerk's Office for the month of May collected receipts in the amount of $28,285.23. For the month of April, the Municipal Court collected receipts in the amount of $26,668.52. For the month of May, the Department of Community Development collected receipts in the amount of $85,064.33. Recycling road opening permits for the month of May were in the amount of $18,706.25. Recycling commodity in the amount of $560, and truck parking in the amount of $500. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 19, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of May 25th, 2017.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 20, motion to approve township meeting minutes of May 25th, 2017.
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 21, motion to approve raffle license applications for the Forked River Tuna Club and the Knights of Columbus Ladies Auxiliary.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have some add-ons this evening. Okay, first is resolution 178. It's a resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, appointing substitute on-the-bus drivers for the Recreation Department. These are our summer bus drivers that we utilize for the Recreation Department. We are short-staffed, we are hiring two, it's Nanti Guerrero and Joseph Calabrese on a substitute basis when we need them. Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes. Item 23.
Resolution 179, resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the 2017 municipal budget known as Chapter 159 of the Township of Lacy pursuant to NJSA 48 Con 4-87. This is for the Alcohol Education Rehabilitation and Enforcement Fund. We are receiving $3,345.67. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes.
Next is resolution 180. It's a resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, confirming a settlement through the municipal joint insurance fund.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes.
Next is a resolution 2017-181, resolution Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, awarding a contract to Jersey Professional Management for solicitation of a public works director.
Move it.
Second?
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes.
Next is first reading of an ordinance 2017-18. In order to Township of Lacy County, motion of state in New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 335 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacy entitled zoning so as to amend various sections of the code. This is updating various sections of the municipal code in accordance with our application that we're making for plan endorsement with regards to permitted uses.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Cortolo?
Yes.
All right, that is all I have to add on.
Three, comments from the committee. Deputy Mayor Juliana?
Thank you, Mayor. As everybody knows, Tim McDonald is not here tonight. He's under the weather. We had one knee replaced on it right there, and yet, yeah, he's kind of under the weather, so I told him I would go over all the little things for recreation tonight. This Saturday, June 10th, Hooked on Fishing, No Drugs, free event at Milpon First Lake. Check-in is at the basketball courts. The time, I think, is...
It's 7:00 AM?
It's 7:00 AM. It's 7:00 AM, yes, he changed it from last year, it's 7:00 AM. They're trying to do it early.
The fish get up early.
Yeah, so they catch the fish real early and cook. Second thing, Saturday, June 17th, opening day beach party, another free event at Lake Barnicot, the second lake. Start time is at 12 o'clock. There's live music by the Caribbean Music provided by DNA. Of course, Monday, July 3rd, fireworks display, another free event, of course. Lacy Township High School starts at 7:30 PM, fireworks are at 9:15, and of course, as we noticed tonight, sponsored by Exelon, their very good, nice donation they gave us. There'll be a DJ provided by Not So Normal Entertainment. Wednesday, July 19th, our outdoor concert at Bayfront Park. Additional parking and shuttle service at Green Park. Part of the Carousel of Music, Ocean County sponsors, will be the B Street Band, that's a Bruce Springsteen cover band. That'll be our first thing we'll be doing at Bayfront Park. Am I right? There's nothing else before that?
No.
No. Tuesday, August 1st, National Night Out at Gilly Park, start time at 6:00 PM, sponsored by the Lacy Municipal Police Foundation. There'll be police demos, children's IDs, you meet the local police, there's an outdoor movie. Wednesday, August 16th, another outdoor concert at Deer Lake Park Beach, start time is 6:00 PM. The performing band there will be the Tequila Rose Band, it's classic in new country rock. Saturday, August 26th, Lacy Municipal Alliance 5K and One Mile Fun Run at Gilly Park. 5K run is at, starts[1470.62] Five K run is that, starts at eight thirty AM. The fun run starts at eight AM. Registration is free, I'm sorry. Registration fee, I apologize. Thursday, August thirty-first, another outdoor movie night, free event at Deerhead Lake Beach. Start time is eight PM. Be Star Wars The Force Awakens. Last thing he asked me to speak about was Lacey Township's Annual Farmers Market is coming back, June twenty-third through September fifteenth. Fridays from eleven AM to five PM, located in the parking lot of the municipal church on Lacey Road.
Methodist?
Methodist Church, I'm sorry. Methodist Church, thank you, Gary. Farmers Market. That's about all, Mayor, that's all he, and I told him I would speak about everything, bring everything up, so everybody knows what's going on for the summer. I think it's a good start of a lot of good things happening in Lacey with the Bayfront Park, with the concert there, and I think we're gonna start doing a lot of things just as, you know, Berkeley Township does, and I think it attracts a lot of people.
And most of, all of what you said is free to work on.
Yes.
So it's a very good thing.
That's why I make sure I announce it to them, everything is a free event, so, you know, I think it's a good start. I think a lot of good things don't have a very good future.
Great information, thank you. Committee man Quinn?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess a few months ago, if you recall, we had the chief who's here tonight with us, we had the Explorers Program started here in Lacey Township, working in conjunction with the Explorer Program that's existing already at the county. And it's a project that Chief DeBella really has a lot of pride in, and you know, has a lot of interest in, because it brings young boys and girls into a program that's gonna be fantastic for them to learn and get to know what it's like to be involved in law enforcement as they grow up and move forward into the next chapter of their life. And certainly, it's a great stepping stone if they decide to go into law enforcement themselves later on. But last week, the chief had the Explorer Post that we have here in town, participated in a program down, it was a competitive program down at Stockton State College. I just want to read a little update, because the kids did extremely well, and they should be very proud of themselves, and I certainly want to recognize them. The Ocean County Chiefs of Police Law Enforcement Explorer Post Number One competed in a police explorer competition this past weekend at Stockton State College. It was held from Friday through Sunday. Eleven police explorers, including young adults from Lacey Township, competed against twelve other police explorer posts from around the state of New Jersey. There were total of seventy-six kids competing, and the chief is very proud to say that the Ocean County Chiefs of Police Law Enforcement Explorer Post One came in number one, placed overall in the competition itself. In the drill, in the, in addition, they took first place in the burglary and process event as well as the drill event. They took second place in the motor vehicle stops, physical training for males, and in the search and seizure event. And they took second and third place in that search and seizure. So in such a short time, you know, piggybacking with what's going on up at the county, these kids have really, you know, made a name for themselves out there in the state with the rest of the explorer posts that exist. So I certainly want to, you know, congratulate them, I want to congratulate the chief on, you know, your wisdom to take and put these kids, you know, into this program to begin with and make it such a great asset, you know, for kids to be involved in something. Having said that, there's still a few openings in the post itself, if anyone out there would like to get involved in something like this and really participate at a level that's gonna be very good for them, you know, for whether you go into law enforcement or not, it's a great thing to have on your resume. So the Law Enforcement Explorer Post One is still looking for a few more young adults. You have to be age fourteen to twenty-one in order to join, and as I said, if you're interested in a career in law enforcement, this is a great asset to have. For requirements and information, log on to the Lacey Township Police Department's website, which is lacypd.org, and click the box at the top that says, states about us. Scroll down to the Police Explorer Bar, you'll get additional information there. Or you can reach out to Lieutenant Paul Sullivan, who was here earlier also, at six oh nine six nine three six six three six, extension two five seven seven. Chief, you know, congratulations, because it really, these kids are really shining, and we're very proud of what you've accomplished in your short tenure as the chief of police here in town, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Just touching on what the deputy mayor was talking about, National Night Ad is coming up. Again, this is a program which we're going into for the first time. The chief has chosen, this is another one of the programs she'd like to participate in. I'm just gonna give you a little bit more detail than what, you know, Nikki had talked about. Program's being held on Tuesday, August first. It's gonna be rain or shine, and it's over at Gilly Park from six to eleven PM. So far, the Lacey Township Police Department, the Ocean County Sheriff's Department, the State Police are all gonna be participating in the program itself, and they're gonna be bringing local service organizations as well. There's gonna be a state police helicopter landing, and gonna fly over, there'll be child IDs, there'll be face painting, canine demonstration, drone demonstrations. These are just some of the activities in addition to having the skate park open from six to nine with the DJ playing live music. Lacey Recreation's gonna be showing an outside movie at nine o'clock as well at that same event. There'll be food provided during the evening. The event is still in the planning stages, and there's gonna be additional activities forthcoming. So if you're interested in more information, again, reach out to Lieutenant Paul Sullivan, six nine three six six three six, or Jim Meeland, our Recreation Director, six nine three eleven hundred. But it's gonna be a real nice night, it's a nice family event, so if you have your family, you want to come out and participate, you know, certainly mark it on your calendars, and, you know, you'll have a lot of fun. The chief's been running these skate park programs every couple Fridays, and there's another one coming up at the end of this month, which is June thirtieth, from six to ten PM over at Gilly Park in our skate park. Again, there'll be a DJ there playing music all night, the police and the fire annual squads are all participating in putting this together, and it's being coordinated, of course, by the Police Foundation and Lacey Recreation and the Municipal Alliance. It's a great event for kids, you want to get them, you know, off the streets, you want them to have something to do during the summer months, the school is out, June thirtieth or so, you know, mark your calendars, come on out. They run pretty much once a month, and it's had a great response, and it's a great, you know, ability for kids to still participate with each other and be in something that's, you know, keeping them safe and protected in with the surroundings that they're in. Child Safety Seat Check, as I mentioned before, is coming up, June twenty-first, from four to seven over at the Minoka Harbor Firehouse. That's done every year by the police department and the sheriff's officers. If you want to call and schedule an appointment, all you have to do is call six nine three six six three six. Very important program, because if you have a small child or a grandchild and you put your seat in wrong, it could certainly be a tremendous tragedy if, God forbid, you have an accident. So, you know, if you make the effort to get over there, I did it myself, and it was very, it was a great learning experience, because I had my seat in back there, so. Just two more things, just so everyone in public knows, if you come out to the meetings, this is June, so in June, July, and August, we have one meeting a month, so starting this month, tonight's our only meeting for the month, unless we have additional business to do, we would be doing a special meeting, of course. So, you know, if you're planning to come out in two weeks, the door's gonna be locked, so just mark your calendars on that. And last thing, I just want to touch on, again, something that Chief DeBella, it was something he was really, very gone hell on when we hired him as chief of the police department. We weren't all sure about it, although this is something that we've talked about, I said to the chief and Superintendent Wigley from the schools last week when we met and we finalized our SRO agreement that we put into place tonight. This has been something that's been in the talking stage and kind of going back and forth for twenty years now. When I was on the school board twenty years ago, we were talking about that, and we've never been able to get to the point where we've been able to do it, but I know, chief, it was a priority of yours, and tonight, I'm happy to say that we took, passed a resolution to put a full-time police officer into the schools starting in September. The schools were doing a shared service agreement where the cost of the police officer will be split between the schools and municipality. We'll have the police officer working on our side for the months of July and August, and he'll be working the school full-time. It's a great program, it's meant, not only is the police officer gonna be teaching classes and trying to, you know, have more presence and security in schools, but, you know, it's the ability for the students to build a relationship with the police officer, and it's gonna be there, they're gonna get to know him. You know, we're very confident that it's gonna do some, you know, tremendous amount when it comes to drug issues, when it comes to any kind of bullying issues. A lot of things that the schools don't have the ability to deal with right now, between the partnership, we have the chief on our side, we have Superintendent Wigley on the other side. I think it's gonna be a real good thing for the residents of Lacey Township, so. Chief, I know, you know, it didn't go quick, it didn't go smooth, but, you know, we were all, you know, ironed out an agreement, and we're very happy to have, you know...
It was a real long process, progress, and then we met several times, and as you said earlier, this has been a real passion of mine since I was appointed chief back in August, so. I really gotta thank everybody sitting up there for making this contribution for Lacey Township. It's, like you said, twenty years, and, you know, we think finally lined up where we got this in place, so, again, thank everyone of you for making this possible for Lacey Township.
Thank you, chief. And to the schools, you know, we certainly wish them the best. I think it's gonna be a situation where they're very happy with the overall results at the end of the, what we've done has gone into a three-year program, and if it doesn't work out, we can always take and eliminate the program, or we can take an extended, depending on, you know, the situation, how successful it is, so. I appreciate the whole committee's support, because it really is something that I think is gonna work out well, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Committee man Quinn. Thanks for that good work. Totally support that, you know, doing the work that I do in prevention and having open discussions with our chief. I thank you for all that work that you've done, and I know we all support it. Committee man Kennis?
Thank you, Mayor. And just, you know, just to piggyback on Gary's comments on the school resource officer, that was with the full cooperation of both our administration and the school administration, we're all on board. The other night, I got a chance to attend the Oyster Creek Community Information Night. I can't stress enough how important they have been to the township as a partner. I get, you know, more and more people asking me about the power plant, and I bring it up tonight, because the, in the past year or so, Exelon has been in the news quite a bit for closing the power plant. They were attempting to close two in Illinois, Illinois found a way to save them, and recently they're threatening to close Three Mile Island, so I'm kind of curious to see how that will turn out. But my point in bringing it up is, in, it's my understanding that it was the Corzine Administration that made the ultimate decision to force the power plant to put in cooling towers, and of course, they made a purely economic decision to, you know, to close the plant due to that. And I bring it up, just, I just wish that the politicians of both parties would realize some of the long-term effects that some of these decisions have, and they should really make more of an emphasis on the, you know, the economic base in New Jersey. We have a very crushing tax system in New Jersey, so anything that any of the politicians can do to reduce the amount of regulation in the state would be a good thing.
What was my thoughts, Mayor? Thank you very much. I have a few comments as well, and I'd first like to, again, talk and congratulate the chief. I was able to attend the Office of Emergency Management Meeting on June fifth. We're not only the chief, but most all of our department heads were there, and we're game-planning different things coming up in the future. Smart planning, because when you plan, you know you don't have to hope, and that's just smart business all the way around. And we touched on different events that are gonna be coming up, we heard our deputy mayor talk about several of them tonight, so we're looking out for the safety of the community, and I think that's been more than well in hand, with a very capable chief, public works, recreation, town administrator, and everybody else that was there from our emergency services. So I just want to say thank you to all of those folks all the way around. I had the distinct honor of attending Scholarship Night at Lacey Township High School. We had there one hundred and seventy-five of, I believe, the three hundred and fifteen graduating seniors, and each one of those one hundred and seventy-five garnered at least one scholarship. It was really a spectacle to behold. It was a packed house. I just can't say enough about the administration over at the high school, who is proactive and who certainly, as I've said before, doesn't work in a silo. They work with our chief of police, and they work well with everybody in the community, including the municipal alliance. You know, they say it takes a village to raise a child, and here in Lacey Township, everybody has a hand in that, and everybody should be commended for it. So there were some of our best and brightest on that stage the other night. I want to say thank you to Superintendent Wigley, the school board, the teachers, everybody that had a hand in mentoring those young people all the way through. I also want to thank the chief, I had a very small part, and it was the chief and the people at the high school, and Jeremy Merman and the administration over at the high school. We did about a five or six-minute PSA, acted out very well with different police officers. I know Officer Verway was one for DUI prevention. Went out, they went out on the road, they were in police cars, students from the high schools, from the high school, you know, plead, the person who was arrested, really should be something that any driver ed class should see moving forward in the future. Had discussion with the chief earlier today, hopefully it'll be up on the Lacey Police Website very shortly with the proper credits and accolades, and again, I had a very small piece in it for the prevention work I do throughout the county, but charity starts at home. I'm looking out for Lacey first. I would never be able to do any of it without the chief, the high school, the students who did a great job. If you have an opportunity when that's up, take a look at it, it's a good piece. There've been, as Committee man Kennis had said, many questions over the last several months and several weeks about the state of the nuclear plant. I was fortunate enough to tape a news segment on Comcast Newsmakers, NBC affiliate, that I believe now is posted on our website, if it's not, it will be posted shortly under Events, there's Q and A, and there it really talks about the hard work and the heavy lifting that members of the committee have been doing to prepare, because the future does belong to the prepared. We have been preparing for an eventual closure slash slowdown at that plant. So I quell a lot of concerns in that video, in that interview. I'm optimistic, because I have reason to be optimistic, because a lot of good work is being done. So I would encourage people to click on lacytownship.org and take a look at that video. It answers a lot of the questions, and as always, six nine three eleven hundred if you continue to have questions, we will call you back. I signed the document today, our township administrator had mentioned that we borrowed money today. The money that we borrowed today was at an interest rate of one point zero nine percent, some of the lowest I've ever heard of. And I talked to our finance professional downstairs, Linda Gavello, it's the lowest that I believe she has heard of. That's because of the responsible spending that we've done over the years as a committee and as a committee traditionally going many years back. So that kind of loan and that kind of interest rate comes when you have responsible spending, it comes when you have a good credit rating, just like if you're in a single-family home or an apartment. If you're responsible, you get treated well. I don't know how much better you can get treated than one point oh nine percent, but that's what we, that's what I assign the town to today. I think that's a home run out of the park. I'm proud of it. I had a very small portion of it. I work with five people up here and great department heads that do heavy lifting, so I do want our taxpayers to know about that moving forward. I do have a small piece here to read for the Historical Society. Lacey Historical Society will be holding Granny's Attic Yard Sale on Saturday, June tenth, from nine to one, rain or shine. We're located on Route nine near the Lacey Municipal Utilities Authority. Proceeds go towards the museum expenses. It's a beautiful museum. If you want to see our history, the town is steeped in history, please go to that School House Museum, it is really a wonderful place, and take the children. If you'd like to donate an item, you can drop it off Friday, June ninth, from five to seven, or before nine AM on Saturday. For special arrangements, call six oh nine nine seven one oh four six seven. They are just some of the great people in our town, are living history. If you have an opportunity, go out there, help, it's a great thing. I'd also like to thank the Lieutenant Governor Kim Cudano for visiting Lacey Township last night. It's not the first time, and she's been very above-boarded with her support of Lacey Township. With that, I do have one more item. It's unfortunately an unhappy item, thanks to Mayor Carmen Amato in Berkeley Township. Each year, Lacey Township alumni play a football game against the alumni from Central Regional. This year, Carmen Amato gave me a phone call, Mayor Amato. He said, "Why don't you come up, the game's at Berkeley this year at Central Regional." It was this past Saturday night, I drove up there, it was a magnificent night. We were Lacey Township alumni going back many, many years, there was one graduate there from the class of seventy-three, so these were some proud gents, and I was proud of it.
That's not that old, I agree with that.
Yeah, so, Lacey was central, that was central, 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 that's correct. We were off to a three-nothing start, marching up and down the field. Unfortunately, the Central Regional Golden Eagles beat us thirteen to three. I had the unenviable task of handing the mayor's trophy over to Mayor Amato, and I owe him dinner as well. I'm hopeful that next year, we can clean their clocks, and I can get that thing back.
Actually, I think it first made it ever lost.
Well, thank you, hey, this is a public meeting, so I want to thank you, Committee man Quinn, for informing our residents of that. We hope to have it back next year, if we do have it back, it'll be sitting prominently up here. Congratulations begrudgingly to Central Regional. Unfortunately, they beat us, but it won't happen next year with that. I'll certainly open up the floor to public comment if we have any. Yes, sir. Here. Name and address, here.
Good evening, Jeremy Merman, Bearmore Avenue, Minoka Harbor. I came tonight, obviously, for the Lacey Fishing Derby, which is on Saturday, and to extend the invite to come out. A lot of people worked really hard on it, the Municipal Alliance, just always does such a great job with us, a very generous donation. We went down today with some of the students from Mill Pond School, and we stopped the lake up a little bit, so we put a couple of fish in there. And really, one of the reasons we started running this event was, you know, not just to get that one day, to get that one free fishing day in, but to try to get people there a little more often, and I think we've been starting to see that. I'm starting to see a lot more kids fishing down there, and booking the dog down there, and kind of talking to everybody, and it sounds like things are going really well, so we're really happy with the way that's going, and we're running it a little bit earlier this year, at seven to ten AM, and, you know, obviously, like, I see as many people as we can down there. We had three hundred last year, and hopefully we'll get something close to that as well this year. So local businesses have been great with it, and we've got a lot of nice donations, and it should be a really good day. Switching gears completely for a second to something you were just talking about, Mayor Cortolo, and that partnership that we had between the high school TV studio and the Lacey Township Police Department was just so great for my kids this year, something that we'd never done before. We've had a lot of good experience with them over at WLTS over the years, but I really have to credit Chief DeBella for coming out and sending down, and I think the guy that maybe doesn't get enough credit in the OLS, or no chief, who's been the go-between between us and the chief and between the police department. And, I mean, the kids won award after award with that first PSA, the heroin PSA, and this next PSA, I think, when they run it through the film best circuit next year, will probably do the same thing. And we've got a third one on the way as well, on the Shrek of Dr. Rabin. So the partnership's been great, the chief and the police department really hold the kids' feet to the fire on exactly what they want and how they want it, and that's great, because that's something that they can hear from me all day long, but when they're hearing from somebody that's like a client, you know, "Hey, we need this, this needs to be in there," it's really good. It's been a great partnership, and I just want to thank, you know, Officer Chief and Chief DeBella for really doing a great job with kids this year. We just got a letter from Congressman McArthur a couple of days ago, thanking us for the first PSA, so that was really nice to hear.
You did a great job, Jeremy.
Alright, thank you very much.
You did a great job, those kids were great.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir? Please come. Name and address, please.
Jesse Armstrong, Longwood Drive.
Yes, sir.
Pulling towers two thousand and ten, Chris Christie. And also, I just noticed that Stafford just hopped on board with the Brick and Manchester Program. I'm just gonna keep pushing my hat, I guess.
You're talking about the HARP program.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Right, well, I think the chief could say a couple of words about that, I'm well-versed in it, but you have any more comments, sir?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Alright, chief, if you'd like to, come up to the microphone and expand upon it.
Again, the HARP program was also known now as actually Blue HARP, was a program, risk program, put out by our county prosecutor, Joe Coronado, presently in Manchester, Brick and Stafford Police Departments, where people that suffer from a heroin or opiate addiction or substance addiction can actually go away to these particular police departments, particular